You got the draw up? I think. Where you live? I bet you where you live, I figured.
No, we're dyed out.
Yeah.
How are you, Brad?
Good.
Hey, Tom, how's coming up?
How are you?
Great, how are you?
I'm very well, thank you.
Oh, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June the 3rd. To start the meeting, would you please stand and join me in the touch of all units.
I plead allegiance to the flag of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and the meeting may also be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. To start the meeting, is the opportunity for public comment. So if somebody is here who has a public comment or a question for the Board of Supervisors, now's the time to raise it, unless it's an item is only a candidate, in which case there'll be an opportunity when that item comes up. Simon said I should be here, yes, Mr. Lyons?
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I will be brief.
I believe the microphone is on. If it isn't, please turn it on. Thank you.
You'll have to, forgive me, I don't, I don't know if I have comments for everybody, but I hope I get a PDF version that I can forward to everybody. My comments will try to be succinct. I know you have a lot of business and a lot of items to address, but I, my primary reason for being here this evening is to represent the neighbors of my community in their deep interest in Forsyth Farm, 905 West Town Road. And we certainly understand that this has been a challenge for our township for more than 20 years, close to 20 years, but it has reached a point where it is no longer acceptable that an outside developer who came to our township a couple of months ago proposed his old idea to develop this eight and a half acres of land by proposing six to nine homes on an eight and a half parcel acre land with egress routes coming from Baba Lake and Falcon Lane, which would provide multiple complications in terms of traffic, in terms of increasing the risk of accident, not to mention the enormous amount of money it would cost to even develop this land. These points will illustrate that there is a wetlands, which I believe everyone is familiar with. There is an endangered turtle, the federally protected species act bog turtle, and there's information in that packet regarding that. But I want to emphasize that we have a DEFCON 1 situation here with respect to our local history. The radius of Forsyth Farm in a three mile radius includes multiple historic assets, some of which have been forgotten, some of which are still there. The Shiloh Amy Church and Cemetery is just up the road, the corner of Little Shiloh and Shiloh Road. It is a historic black church and cemetery dating back to 1817, including 14 United States color troops and upwards of 140 graves. That property owner has been obstinate and refusing to allow us to memorialize the heroes buried there. That history is connected with the deep history of Forsyth Farm, 905 West Town Road. John Forsyth was the first schoolmaster at West Town. He is revered in the Quaker community, and this history touches on abolition, an underground railroad network which has been discovered in our community, and the reason we have to stand up for this, this important historic asset is because it identifies our legacy as a community, specifically at a time when this country is going through so much turmoil. The Quakers who established this land, whose history is often neglected or buried, is exemplified in the example of John Forsyth. He was connected to Enoch Lewis, who was an extraordinary abolitionist. The West Town School, education, agriculture, the environment, the natural world. And so my hope here, number one, is to let you know that this committee, this organization is born, save Forsyth Farm, and we find it unacceptable that this property owner, who's been facing multiple violations, we'd like to know why enforcement of these violations has not happened. We'd like to know what the township's position is and how we can work together to solve this. There are many townships in the county dealing with similar issues, and there is, in fact, a precedent to save and protect a historic asset fundless process of demolition by neglect. So I think that's a pretty good summary at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. As you know, the board is aware of the state of this property and has obviously tried to discuss with the property owner, bringing it into repair. I don't believe we've had any fruitful conversation with the property owner. I believe he did come to the Historic Commission, which you remember.
And he also proposed, forgive me, he also proposed that he would be willing to offer some money to the township if he built these homes. Now, I don't know what constitutes a bribe, but those were words out of his mouth, and that was deeply distressing to me, coming from a guy who has three sheriff sales in three years, three canceled and postponed sheriff's sales within the past three months. And so there is an opportunity for some creative discussions about how this can be protected.
Yeah, it is a private property. He has expressed, I believe, his long-term intention was to rehabilitate the property. It's never happened in 20 odd years that he's owned it, and he has a right as a private property owner to seek development proposals for his land and his use. We don't have an ordinance that is in place today that allows us to preserve and protect a historic building that exists on this particular property. We don't even have, as you well know, an ordinance that prevents demolition by neglect. We're trying to work that through this process that we've discussed. So at the moment, we've had limited options. We have many outstanding, I believe, citations on the property, notice of violations. Chris, I don't hear any specific numbers.
I believe it's up to 96. 96.
You know, we have done what we can within the municipal legal authorities that we, authority that we have to try to cite this property owner to get him to do something. He is in violation of a court order relative to this, and we have liens on the property as well. So at this point, our hands are, in my opinion, in ties to what we can do further until the court acts against him.
So the Native American burial ground is one issue, and then there, it is believed, it's been reported that there are other human remains on the property.
All the issues you raised relative to the property, whether it's the bog turtle, wetlands, access and everything else, is all part of what would have to be considered in any plan or proposal to redevelop the land. As far as I'm aware, there has been no specific redevelopment. It seems to be talk and nothing more. We certainly, as I understand, Chris, have not received anything.
There's been no application filed with the township that I'm aware of.
And so at this point, we go from one month to another where the property owner stays the sheriff sale by paying off some of what is outstanding mortgages. I would believe that would stay for a period of time, and that seems to be what he's doing. So at this point, we've explored in executive session options around this property, and we are where we are. We don't have a specific plan to acquire the property or to look at an open space fund or anything like that with the township.
So is there any way to stop the sheriff sale, which would allow the community to think further? Because that's coming up June 18th at this point.
I don't believe there is. I mean, probably, he is a private property owner, and legally, it's, you know, the mortgage he is the person responsible for obtaining the settlement of that debt, and it's between those parties.
See, my contention is that township has a responsibility to protect historic assets.
Well, it's, you know, it's a personal opinion. We do what we can and work with whoever comes in terms of a development proposal to do that. We worked with the proper developer of Alice Lane recently with respect to preserving an older property there. But this is a private property, and we do not have ordinances that allow us to do anything, not even demolition by neglect, if I'm not wrong.
So when a developer comes into a township, for example, like West Town Township, and Toll Brothers, they have workshop sessions where a developer speaks to Board of Supervisors prior to the meeting proper. What about the community when a historic asset is involved, and the community is shut out from those discussions until the, until the proposals come to the table? We have just as much a right to be a part of an ongoing discussion before it even gets to that stage.
Well, as I said, we've had no contact with any developer, only the property owner with regard to the outstanding violations and the money that's owed to the township.
There have been no meetings with township staff about any development projects on that property.
So what happens when they do come? How does, are we just, do we just work through the normal process of?
So if someone were to submit a subdivision land development application, they would do that, and it would just follow the normal course of review?
Normal course of review.
Unless they need some type of, if they need some type of relief from the zoning hearing board, they would seek that through that process, which would involve potentially variants or a special exception, but if they're just subdividing a property based on the byright uses in that zoning district, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's in the R3 zoning district, it would just go through the normal land development process. And they don't have to have any kind of pre-meeting or any sort of workshops or anything with the township. They could come in one day and just file an application. That is their right.
And the community doesn't have a right to protect its historic assets, which increase property values and form the culture and legacy of the county and the country?
Well, no, I did not say that. But also, Mr. Walsh stated, there is no, there's no ordinance, there's no ordinance related to historic resources.
I don't think it's dependent on an ordinance to enforce that, when for 20 years, a house has been deteriorating willfully, willfully, and like, if it was any of us, if it happened to us, I mean, and our beliefs were starting to cave in, I think.
Well, and the township, I take exception to your number two here of immediate concern saying that nothing has been done regarding enforcement. The township is operating under the normal enforcement proceedings.
Yeah, I didn't mean township.
Okay.
Whoever should be enforcing the legal aspect of your fines that have been levied.
Yes, we filed, we issued notices of violation, filed citation, non-traffic citations with District Court. Shelby's filed nearly, she's filed nearly 100 of them.
So 100 of them, and who's not taking action, and how do we get?
That is up to, that is up to the District Court. We cannot impose fines, that has to be levied by a judge.
And how do we, how do we approach a district judge, though?
We have filed them, and I know Shelby's had numerous conversations with the court.
So it's a judicial matter?
Yes. At once, once it reaches, we issued a notice of violation. If they don't cure the violation within, I believe it's 20 days, I believe it is 20 or 30 days, I don't remember the timeline off the top of my head, but once they, if they don't cure the violation, then we file non-traffic citations in District Court, then the judge has to set a hearing and have a hearing on that, and then the judge levies the, levies the, any appropriate fines. So it's a, it's a judicial proceeding.
So has that been done already?
He's been, he's been fined for a series of violations that we issued in 2023.
Has he paid them?
Has he paid them? To the best of my knowledge, he hasn't. And that's, and that's a matter, that's, that's a matter with the court, that's with the courts.
That is a good question. Okay, someone said something about the township has liens on the property, is that true?
Yes, for a non-payment of utilities, or terminations.
Okay, so is it, is it public, how much, you know, the liens that we have on, does a township have on that property? Do we have a dollar mark?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it's public record. I believe it's just over $6,000.
Okay. Now, does he have to settle up on all his citations and liens before he can develop the property, before he's going to get the okay to do anything? Does he have to settle his debts and his, I mean, this guy's.
The citation, that I don't believe so, but I would turn, I would defer to the solicitor.
Well, I, I'm not familiar with this issue, but I would say in a general way, that typically municipalities, when the property is sold, then the liens are collected. That's typically what happens. And I do not think we can withhold a land development approval because there are liens on the property.
Any outstanding citations, as my understanding, are not leasable because they're held by the justice system, is that correct?
Yes.
Justice system. So he's not paying them either? He's just letting everything deteriorate over there, and then he's going to walk in and do what he wants to do? Is that what I'm understanding from the township? Is that what the township is saying to us?
Well, the most likely thing is a property owner's byright use to subdivide in an R3 district and create parcels of land that is worth something to a developer, right? So the property is valued at way over $1 million, is outstanding mortgage is $493,000, something like that. So if he gets a developer who's, he can work with, is willing to go to a settlement with him to purchase the property, they would negotiate a price, a sale agreement, that developer then typically would come to the township, want to understand the zoning, the wetlands, and all these other things they'd want to do before the purchase of the property, to understand how many lots they could develop. They would do all their business case, case math on it, and they would reach an agreement with the property owner. And at that point, this, our solicitor said, if the property then goes to sale, all the mortgages will be paid off, or the liens will be paid off, or the violations will be paid off, whatever netted would be given to the property owner, and then would now be held by a developer to build lots. That's how the process works typically, for a subdivision.
And, and do the neighbors not have any say in this situation? Because first of all, West Town Road, as you know, from Mallard to West Town Way, have had multiple car accidents, multiple deaths in the, in the years that I've lived here. And to my knowledge, there hasn't been a study done on traffic there. The traffic increased when, when Moros subdivided and created that mess that they did, when Nusseks subdivided and did what they did. Our traffic on that street increased 20-fold, and we have people flying down that street. We've had, we just had an accident on, on, on Falcon.
So to answer you, I think the question you really have is what happens? So the developer has to comply with all our ordinances in our subdivision of land development, which include things about traffic and all the other aspects of developing the property. So they would be addressed during that process, at which time there is opportunity, as it comes through the Township Review Process, for public input, because we have public meetings where the Board reviews the plans with the, with the developer at that time, and that would include things like traffic studies, et cetera.
And also gets reviewed by the Planning Commission as well. Those are public meetings. The agendas are posted the Friday before the meeting. They meet the second Tuesday of every month at 7:00. And all the agendas are posted, actually even the Thursday before the meeting. So they're made, they're made per few days in advance.
I do want to reiterate the fact that this is a byright use to subdivide. This, this person owns this property in this zoning district, there's a certain lot size that has to be built, but he's subdivided the property. Won't be a conditional use where we look at aggrieved parties or accept parties to a development proposal. Byright use means that's the power of owning that property, you have the right to do it. So as long as you follow the ordinances and the regulations that are required, and you meet the requirements, or whatever is required to mitigate issues, whether that's wetlands, traffic, anything, that, that can be developed.
So you're going to cut through to a double cul-de-sac street?
We, I don't know, can't say what's going to happen.
It's not going to happen. I can tell you, on behalf of our neighbors, there's no way in hell that land is going to get developed, and I appreciate the extraordinary difficult position you all are in, and it's not fair and it's not right. There is a precedent, even without historic ordinances, for a municipality to take legal action against a homeowner who is willfully letting a demolition by neglect scenario happen, and that's exactly what's happening.
I mean, the board has looked at, you know, what would be our legal position to try to do that, when we have no ordinance saying that demolition by neglect is, except that we would be spending our taxpayer money on a case that, in my opinion, would be very unlikely to go anywhere. So I hear what you say, but I don't think it's a way forward for this particular problem.
We can't let this asset be destroyed.
Excuse me, can I say something?
Yeah.
By the way, we do need people to state their name and where they live, whether they make a question or a comment, because we have a record, it's a public record, we do need to know who's speaking. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, may I come up or?
Absolutely.
I had just say something here. I recognize what Stephen is saying, recognize what the board is saying, agree with the board. I'm speaking of, not as an actual supervisor, but one who's lived, someone who's lived with one for many years. The neighbors certainly have a right. When we did rocking, when we do all these other developments, you have a right to come to our meetings and, and have input, but if they follow the ordinance, they can do it. It's private property, Sean's exactly right. And as much as we don't like to see what's happening, we would love to see it saved. There's history, there's history all over the township. One history isn't any more important than the other history. It's all important, every one is important. So I agree with Sean. When the time comes, if it comes to be developed, planning commission will do its best to guide it as best we can. We'll look at traffic, we'll look at everything, but Stephen, I disagree. You can't be so strong worded. The Board of Supervisors.
Absolutely, I can. You've letting this property rock for 20 years.
Stephen, lower your voice.
This is great.
Please keep the meeting respectful, both. Everybody just say what you have to say, and I think the person finish, and don't make personal comments about each other, thank you. While I'm referring to.
But the Board of Supervisors is absolutely correct. They are bending over backwards to do what they can to make everything goes as, as exactly as it should. And the, the residents have every right to come and help guide it and have input, but if it meets the ordinance, it can be done. That's all I can say.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, the lady in the background, please state your name, if you wouldn't mind, just come up to the microphone. I mean, I think, by the way, we are aware of the public comments, and we can want to give everybody the opportunity to speak, but we, at this point in the process of our meeting, if it's, we'd like to add something new to a statement so we can keep the process moving along.
Karen Shelley Gethner, I'm on Bob Marley Green. And I've been on in West Ocean since 1986. My question would be, since we know that there are Indians, Native American Indians that are buried there, there has been a request that he has ignored, Mr. Kravitz, to have radar, ground penetrating radar done, and he has not agreed, he's totally ignored it. We would like to determine where exactly that area is. We would like to determine what tribe that is. We would like to have those, the Indians notified that these are their people that are there. We know that down on Shiloh Road, there was Cherokee that came out, I think maybe three years ago, and, because there was Cherokees buried there. I think it's important that we do things like that. The fact that there are, it's alleged that there are other family members of the Freemans that are buried on the property, we would also like to determine that. I think that's an important thing, that the township has some enforcement over. They should have some enforcement over.
So I want to ask a quick question to our council then. Are you aware of any kind of law about burial grounds in Pennsylvania, requirements when it comes to properties?
There are laws about burial grounds, but we don't have the authority to go onto private property and do ground penetrating radar or exhume bodies or anything like that. There may be, and I'm not aware of this, someone in the Commonwealth that has such authority, like Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission or one of their agencies. So that might be someone you can contact.
I have.
Well, the, the question still goes back to which Indians are we referring to? Are we referring to Alana Ilopi? Are we referring to Cherokee? Are we referring to Oka? Yes, that one.
So my next, my next question, I guess, our point of conversation, and this is jumping way ahead, because like I said, we haven't even approached.
I understand, I understand.
There's still this guy who has all these, you know, citations against him that he's not responding to, but my question is, at some point in the future, if a developer were to come and want to develop the property, they would have to go through subdivision land development ordinance, you know, all those things, but would there be any point in that process for negotiations, for example, again, this is premature, I'm not committing to anything here, for example, to talk to a developer about preserving that building and maybe converting it to office or something like that, and while also developing the rest? And at that point, if we're aware that there might be burial grounds, that we would be able to work with the developer with some sort of agreement to be able to go on and at least check for those kinds of things? I mean, do you think developers would be open to that sort of thing?
Sure. It's a discussion that the township could have with a potential developer, the property owner, but there's nothing, I'm aware of, in any of our ordinances that would require them to do that, or just based on the goodness of their art.
Yeah. That would be our hope.
If I may, maybe back. In 1987, Dr. Freeman, who was the previous owner, and took meticulous care of that property, wrote a proposal that's very similar to what Mr. Kravitz has been proposing, only it was five homes, and he would have called, he would have called for the, you know, the maintenance of the historic asset which he lived in, and took immaculate care of, and also the preservation of the barn, which at that time was in great shape and would have been converted into studio apartments. That's on record and planned, but the fact that this has happened is heartbreaking.
I agree with you. I think it's heartbreaking too. It's a beautiful property, it's a historic property, and I totally understand where you're coming from, and I think that this board, I want to speak for everybody, I made up for myself, we've had a lot of conversations about it, and we want to see what's best for that property, and what it would be preserving with the building, so.
Well, and again, a, a large concern that we have is the traffic, is the accidents that have already occurred there. And if you're adding more traffic and you're making a cut through from Falcon to Partridge, coming straight through the property, that's, you're just going to have so much more traffic entering at bad areas.
Since we haven't seen any kind of sketch development plans, it would be very premature to kind of say how access would be provided. They hire engineers and design professionals who analyze and come up with the safest, best way to do these things. That's kind of how they do it. And they would have to do, and I'll let Brian Carter get them wrong, but our subdivision land development ordinance would require traffic impact, so.
Five lots.
Five lots.
Maybe five or more, plus in five, they don't need to do traffic by our own.
Maybe five or more, plus in five, they don't need to do traffic entirely.
So I think five or more lots, so if the individual stated, if the individual stated that they proposed nine lots, they would have to do a traffic study as part of that. That's in our subdivision land development ordinance.
How can you build on a property that has so much wetland and bog turtles?
That's for an engineer to figure out.
Like saying.
I'm not an engineer.
Gotcha, alright. Thank you very much.
If there are any questions, if you make them, a new point please, versus reiterating what somebody's been saying.
A new point. Why?
We'll come back to you, don't worry. Four, five people have their hand up.
Hi, Barbara Reinhardt, I live at 1154 Sylvan Road. I want to know the status of the petition that I turned in last week on this related property. I went and doorlocked the whole contiguous neighborhood, so I have over forty signature, no, over thirty some signatures of people. The petition said something about West Ocean Township purchasing or acquiring this property. I would like to see it be a contingent part of Barker Park. I believe we actually own lot 31 between the West Town corner lot, and it's where the stream goes through. And also, I think we have an easement from Bottle Lake, so a hiking trail that goes from Barker Park through the property, and you can preserve everything else that's on there however deemed possible. But I turned that petition in to the township, and I don't, I don't know the status.
Yeah, so we have Stephen, thank you for doing what you did, we talked about that last time, the public meeting when you were here, so commend you for doing the work you did to get the signatures. Chris has, Chris has provided that to me as chair of the board, now I'm working with Chris on it.
Because everybody's in a hurry. Now, this year, it's been deer. I walked out, there is a baby deer dead on my driveway, and this winter, there was a giant doe right down in front of my mail box on my lawn. It's just one after another. Traffic is so out of hand, nobody stops, it's, it's, and that's-
You're talking about West Town.
It's only getting worse.
You're talking about West Town, right?
Right, but it's, it's only, you think that's not gonna get worse?
I'm just trying to make sure we know where it is, because we can talk to the police about doing some traffic safety work there.
That would be lovely, yeah, that would be wonderful, because that curb right there, I think there should be more, like a stop sign, something.
When's the next traffic safety?
I was gonna say, I would encourage you to come to the next traffic safety meeting and discuss that, and our police traffic will look into it.
When is-
Well, our second board of supervisors meeting this month, which is a couple of weeks from today.
It's on the website, the actual date.
The police chief is here, and we, the board concerned staff can certainly ask him about that section of West Town Road, and he's been-
As it is now, I'm only seeing that getting much, much worse.
The traffic study's been there, that intersection in the past, but we can check and see what the status of that is, and possibly do another one. So we'll be meeting with him over the next couple of weeks, we can raise that concern. I just want to raise a question here. Mr. Cartman, I have an issue about the township acquiring his property, if I can answer our solicitor, what would be involved for that, for us to be able to pursue that option at sheriff's sale?
Well, anyone can bid at the sheriff's sale, so the township could do that if they wanted to.
So the township replaces-
But there are limitations on, we can only pay the appraised value of the property, and that would be somewhat difficult to determine at the sheriff's sale. We'd have to get an appraisal in advance, so we have limitations that in private buyer-
Well, full disclosure, we do have an appraisal on the property, that has been done.
We've had discussions and we did get an appraisal.
And typically, the mortgage company or the lien holder is bidding on that property, and they have to outbid.
Which is very unlikely, I think.
If you look at the sheriff's, if you look at the bidforassets.com website, where this property's listed for sale, there are over a hundred looks at that site when it goes up to sheriff's sale, and then it gets postponed at the last minute, so there's plenty of development interest, I would imagine, so the price will be bid up to probably the appraised value or more, depending on what a developer believes he can get in, in terms of the number of lots.
I would suggest that the board reconsider its position and authorize a township manager to place a bid up to the amount of appraisal, and if we win it, or if not, and then we tell what we could.
How much would that be, John?
Two million dollars.
So we're asking 23,000 residents to pay $2 million of taxpayer money to acquire a property for this benefit of this part of the township. I'm not saying it's not a benefit overall to the community, I'm just saying it's what its immediate and biggest impact would be. So I think it's a large sum of money for a small parcel of land.
I think you need to also keep in mind, it needs to be restored, and now that cost is-
We don't even know if that building can be saved at this point.
Yeah, at this point, we didn't think it could be, based on what you're placing.
It can be saved. If you have the money, if you have the will, it can be saved. I spoke with Don McKay at Barnard Station, he's doing a job all himself, and he is doing immaculate work on that home, but it's will and money.
I think the things for will, for good.
I was gonna say, since you formed a group, similar to Crehley Farm, would it be possible to get funding, in the event this did happen, just putting it out there?
Oh, I'm certain that that could happen.
Yeah, because that would be, for restoring the property, would be obviously a considerable cost, and would your committee consider doing something like that, you know, moving forward? I don't know what your success rate would be, but.
Well, we have a special team, looking to extend our parcel, you know, because it's too not doing that, because, you know.
Yeah, we're kind of dissolving into a discussion, so we're still at public comments, we'd like to have all the comments out, so the board's aware of them all, and then we can move on. So there's someone here-
Uninvisible. Very invisible.
So, do you recognize, if you wouldn't mind coming up?
Oh, really? Oh, so not invisible? How about that?
I recognize you to speak.
Hey! Who'd thought, you know? I mean, really, they had to hour.
Yeah, my name's Kathleen Massey, I live on Warren Road, okay? I, I fill out the survey for the township every time it comes out, and, you know, the residents are asked, you know, what would you like to see in the township? You know, what would improve your quality of life? What would make it better to live here? You know, I mean, because the township residents are the ones that, these tax dollars that you're talking about come from. And first, the first thing on the list every time, okay, is walking trails in open space.
Yes.
So I don't understand why the township would be so-
Against.
You know, would be, yeah, would be so against trying to acquire the space. It could be an extension of Barker Park. It's right across the street, it's right across Falcon, you know, you have Barker Park, and aren't you gonna be talking about doing improvements tonight to Barker Park?
The improvements are relative to our requirement to meet a state permit for stormwater improvement.
I, I'd see, like, like, I don't know if you had said it, or you had said it, a walking trail coming up, you know, coming up from the top, you know, where, you know, the north side of Barker, going down and across Falcon, and into this property, you know, I mean, that's what everybody wants, everybody in the township, that's, that's our quality of life, is, it's probably gone, is, you know, that's what our, that's what we want in our township, and we're seeing all our open space being destroyed, especially in West Ocean.
I want to go ahead and disagree with that, actually, since the time I've been on the board over the last five years, we've more than doubled our open space in the township.
Did the township acquire the open space?
Yes.
Okay, so.
In the past five years only, and that is and has been something that this board has tried really, really, really hard to do.
Next question is, how did they acquire it?
So we have Greystone, we have all of those parks at Greystone that they acquired.
Under sixty acres.
That was, what, at Greystone?
Yes.
That's because they wanted to develop it and destroy everything else?
Which was twenty years before our time.
Well, we also got like a one acre right, right by Barker Park, but then again, that was up to two of the towns.
The what?
Another, there's an acre there right by Barker Park, like on the intersection of West Town Road and Old West Town Way. We acquired that piece of property also.
Where the old house was, it had the tree around it? Yeah, 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 we talked to Ken Barker, he used to live there.
So listen, I, I want to just address your point. I understand the emotions that are involved when it's your house, I do, I'm a owner.
No, I'm just, I don't understand why the township wouldn't jump right on something and try and acquire any open space that we have left.
Okay, so I'm gonna answer your question, at least as far as I'm concerned, what I think, is that, first of all, again, this is a legal process, it's way pre-maturity even be discussing a developer coming in, we haven't even crossed that line yet. In addition to that, in addition to all of you, we often have residents coming in here begging us to help them because their houses have four feet of water from stormwater.
That's gonna be another problem when it's developed.
Exactly.
I disagree on that. The develop, the issues with stormwater are most problematic in the oldest neighborhoods that do not have modern stormwater systems of control in place.
This pre-going through this.
I understand, that's why it's gonna be really difficult to develop it, and to agree that some people think you can.
My point being, right, and development, potential development aside, is that the five of us are charged with setting a budget and allocating funds where they're most desperately needed. And I know that sometimes it can be difficult to see the big picture of West Ocean Township. We try to be as transparent as we possibly can with our budget, and in these meetings, and if you attend a meeting, there are people here begging us to buy them out of their own, out of their homes, because they're underwater.
Then what you're saying is that the way that you acquire this open space is mostly through real estate development, and the developer will give you a part of that property?
No, that's not what I'm saying, about Greystone.
Okay, well, I asked you, like, how do you go about acquiring the open space?
Well, I think your answer to your question is yes, that is how we typically have got, been given more space for the township. We have not got an open space fund, like West Town did a public ballot on their election, whatever it was, where the citizens of the whole township approved to preserve Crehley Park. We didn't do that when Girard came along, that was obviously, like we said, way before this board was around. We didn't have an open space referendum around, do we want to try to raise, whatever it would have been, twenty, thirty million dollars to purchase Girard and keep the whole tract as open space and apart? So that was developed. So at this point, there is no large tracts of undeveloped land in this township, and we've got these smaller parcels, a few acres, where the property owners have a byright used to subdivide and develop. We don't have an open space fund, and to Ashley's point, our budget is pretty tight around the things we can afford and are trying to do to fix existing problems that many people come to this township meetings and have concerns about, and it's mainly stormwater, traffic, and those typical concerns that people have.
Okay, so there's no money, is what you're saying?
We don't have an open space acquisition.
To do anything.
I think I've asked the question, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it came up, I asked, is there any way that we'd be able to put out some sort of referendum for this property to gauge, you know, to all of the township residents to vote on it? And I don't think that it's possible.
You, I'm sorry, you wouldn't do a refer, correct me if I'm wrong Tom, but you wouldn't do a referendum for this property specifically unless you were doing like a tax increase? Because I think what they did with Crehley was they voted to increase, the residents of West Town Township voted to increase their taxes, and then that tax increase went to an open space fund which acquired the property. So that's what, that's the method that you would utilize.
So put out a referendum to increase everybody's taxes, and then all of it would go to this parcel?
Yes, I'd like, East Bradford Township has an open, has a dedicated open space fund, their EIT is one and a quarter percent, and the additional quarter percent goes towards their open space fund.
Okay. So it would have to be set up by the township as a separate fund for open space?
Yes, I mean, the township can allocate money for real estate acquisitions, but as Mr. Walsh stated, we might have anything in our budget for a real estate acquisition of this magnitude.
Plus, you still have the rehab of the property, which is very costly, as I said earlier, so that money would have to come from somewhere also.
And I can't intend any kind of a sheriff's sale or anything to even offer, authorize any kind of bid without the board's authorization.
Right, okay. How long, how long can this guy, the owner?
Well, it's twenty years in counting, right?
Steve mentioned, it's been in sheriff's sales three times in the last three years. I, I was going back on the sheriff's sales, like everything that's online, and I found more than three, quite a few more than three, oh yeah.
They start getting canceled.
It's been, it's been, it goes up, and they get-
He pays his bills.
They get, they get stayed.
It happens.
Or they get continued-
He gets it to the point where it's, and then he just goes.
Right, over and over and over again, and doesn't maintain his property. So, isn't it, it's the township's responsibility to enforce?
We are, yes, and that's what the courts-
We are enforcing, we are doing everything that we can.
He doesn't do it, he-
We can't make him do it, and apparently it's not in here.
There's no mechanism in any law that can compel him to upgrade the property, we issued the, or to rehab the, to rehab the property. He either gets notice of violation, and cures the violations that are outlined in that notice, or he gets, or he, we file a non-traffic citation, and he gets a fine.
Okay, I know of at least one house on Mallard Road that underneath the shed got rats, okay? Now, you're living close to water, and, you know, there's always that chance, but if there's rats there, you know, on, on Mallard, you know, it's close, Mallard Road close to West Town Road, there could be rats on that property. It could be a rat haven.
I hear you, I agree, there's nothing-
Has anyone ever gone out there to check to see if there's rat holes, or anything like that?
I'm not allowed to trans-
You're not allowed to do that.
There is, I know there is, because we have a call.
Okay, if we could, if we could just keep the comments now, just to specific new issues that you want the board to be aware of, that have not already been discussed.
I just wanted to discuss the point that I filled out this survey, how to make the, you know, how to make the, I mean, I would like a walking path that would be close enough to my house that, you know, I could walk through a park, and this, and, you know, Barker Park doesn't really have a walking path, and it's kind of mushy.
I understand.
So to be clear then, you would support the township acquiring this property, is that your position?
Absolutely. And I think a lot of neighbors, if they were aware of the situation, would also be supportive, yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who, yes, sir?
Yeah, my name is Alstair, my name is Tim Coleman, I live on 814 Daisy Lane. The property is directly behind my property. I look at it every day, I'm up on the hill, I look on the property, it's total iso, totally. So, just a comment, I've been there like thirty years, and it's just a mess. We gotta do something.
Thank you, Coleman. Okay, Bob, the last time, go ahead.
We acquired that one acre in Barker Park, I'm reading from West Ocean Parks and Recreation. The $10,000 purchase price was funded through the township's open space fee fund.
Okay, open space fee fund is, when a developer develops property, they pay, they come, meet the, go ahead, Chris.
If they can't, if they can't meet the requirements outlined in the subdivision and land development ordinance, I believe if it's a development of ten acres or more, then they, or ten, not ten acres or more, ten lots or more, then they pay a fee in lieu of dedicated open space. Because under the, under the subdivision and land development ordinance, they're supposed to set aside a certain amount of land in their development for open space, if they meet a certain size. And it's not, and it is not called an open space fund, it's a restricted park fund. It can only be used towards park-related projects.
Which this would be if we made it Barker Park, thanks.
So am I, so am I to understand, according to what John said, that someone is going to go to the sheriff's sale?
No, I didn't say that. I said for the board to consider-
To consider.
Consider its position and make that direct to our township.
Okay.
So, so John can make that request, we would have to have an executive session, because any purchase of real estate should include directing staff to go to sheriff's sale, is done for legal reasons in executive session, so.
And I'll make that request now, that we have an executive session among your board members to consider that.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you everyone.
Mr. Chairman, it would also need to be authorized at a public meeting.
Yes, yeah, of course.
Yeah. After the executive session.
Correct.
Okay, I'd really like to, I think we've heard all the comments, the gentleman has had it, I've not heard from him before back there, if you just please state your name or the new issues you'd like to raise.
Tom Skaters, live next to Tim, at 16 Daisy Lane. He go up in the driveway for Dr. Freeman's former property, run right in the line. What is the possibility or probability of township getting it these ways?
Getting it?
Getting it these ways. These, from, the property from Bottle Lake to Falcon Lane? I know you guys have said no before, but further, you know, in the future, what's the probability?
I don't quite understand your question, but I think what you're referring to is something that would not even be something the board would look or understand until there was a development proposal for the property as to how access would be, so until that point, it came along, it would be reviewed by staff- So until that point, we came along, it would be reviewed by staff and the planning commission as to what the change it would be proposed would be. Are you suggesting that something needs to change now?
No, I'm saying.
Okay.
What would the possibility be? Would he be able to have any legal action to get access to this business?
I don't believe we have that knowledge, we don't know.
Yes.
Or a solicitor.
Yeah. You, he would have no knowledge of this specific situation.
Our solicitor is not here tonight, Tom's here, uh, in her place, so she is definitely more, more well-versed in this issue, but that would be a question for her. Um, and again, I think this is something that we will definitely discuss in executive session as we continue to try to deal with this problem property.
Yeah, problem property is, you know, it's.
I'm gonna bring up one issue. If you have to have a public, uh, meeting, like you said, the sheriff's sale is before the next township meeting.
The next sheriff's sale is June, scheduled for June eighteenth, the next board supervisor's meeting is June seventeenth.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Don't want to draft the sheriff's sale, probably.
I know, I know. But it's likely to be outbid, I'm sure, for something like that, it's just a beautiful property, and I'm sure a lot of developers would want it.
And I, I can say, our solicitor's office monitors this monthly and sends me notifications on if it's going forward or not.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, believe me, the board shares a complete disappointment with what's happened to this property over the years and unfortunately we do not have the ordinance system protected at this point, so. So thank you, everybody, for coming out, we certainly heard what you've had to say loud and clear.
Yes, thank you.
And we have this one action that we will follow up on.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so thank you. So I want to go back to public comment in general, is there anyone else here who has a new public comment? Yes, sir.
Okay, be brief, don't have the air as emotional issue. So just, I'm Pete Latta, chairman and CEO, and I'm already doing a file currently at Long Island, just a quick little history about our company, started in nineteen twenty-four, we remain a family-owned business today, celebrate our centennial anniversary in April first, April Fool's Day, some truckers get into, and anyway, we remain a family-owned business. So the business started in Coatesville, one truck, typical entrepreneur story, relocated to West Town, or West Ocean Township in the early nineteen fifties, had the illustrious facility of a World War Two surplus Quonset hut, no running water, an outhouse, if you can believe it, that was the beginning of our operation in West Ocean Township when we relocated from Coatesville. Rolled the clock forward, we had almost out of business, devastating Teamsters strike, fourteen week work stoppage, nineteen seventy-nine, survived, ended up de-certified from the Teamsters Union, we remain today. Deregulation of the industry happened in nineteen eighty, kind of took the regulatory handcuffs off, enabled us to grow and expand, and we have, in nineteen eighty-seven, we bought the property on West Town Road from Clorox, relocated there. At that time, we were using about fifteen percent of the car parking lot, employee lot on West Town Road, then the fortunate beneficiary of profitable growth over the years, we've gone from less than a hundred people over four thousand people today, our footprints of Canadian mainland border, North Carolina, out through Ohio. Always been very interested in health and welfare of our employees and protection of their property. I go back to the days in the eighties, the meeting room wasn't as nice quarters as this, it was downstairs, as I remember, Leon Haggerty, Tom Gavin, Bob Lambert, all luminary supervisors, dedicated public servants like yourself, putting in your time for the benefit of the community. We got that approved, worked with Ken Lawrence to try to get traffic lights at the West Town two oh two interchange, was raising money from Sardarmore, and Ken's connections with Penn Dot, got the funding, got the lights in there, you can imagine that intersection without traffic lights today. So we, we've grown, we've assembled other properties, always been, I think, a very good corporate citizen, working with the township, have enjoyed our time in West Town, uh, or West Ocean Township. You got me on West Town, sorry. We're on West Town Road, Tim. But anyway, so we've assembled other properties and we've had to expand our employee parking as we've grown, so we have three employee lots, the West Town Road that is dedicated to the ladies, because we're a twenty-four hour operation, and maybe an old-fashioned one, my daughter walking across the street in Ballmer Street, you know, two o'clock in the morning. And then, and then we have the other two lots. The other two lots were already partially fenced, and, you know, if you're familiar with Ballmer Street, Sardarmore property, if you're familiar with the Kelly Fields fenced, if you're familiar with our property fenced, the BFI property we assembled fenced, and Olin, West Ocean Township. We were hit with a rash of catalytic conversion thefts, vandalism of cars, concern for the health and welfare of our employees going across the road by themselves. We had an employee killed on, run over a part-time student working on our dock from Westchester University a few years back, have the crosswalk there now. But at, at any rate, so we wanted to fence the rest of our other two lots, and when we came to learn that we would have to go through a zoning variance to accomplish that, it, it was, it was very disappointing. We, we spent between reimbursing the employees for the damage to the cars, legal fees for the zoning, thus the dawn guard service for the extended dependency of getting the approvals to put the fence in, close to two hundred thousand dollars that could have gone to our employees, et cetera, et cetera. So, a-again, I've been before the supervisors, not recently, but I can, I go back to some of the luminary supervisors that the township has been fortunate to have, and someday you will be luminary supervisors, I hope, like Leon Haggerty and John Flag before that, and, you know, so on. But, um, you know, it, it just, I understand there is an initiative to, um, look at some of the, the zoning regulations, we're in the multipurpose industrial zone really area, and, uh, you know, one of the properties already has three fences on, fences on three sides of it, and, uh, you know, if you look at the Sardarmore property, they got razor wire, you know, six strand barbed wire, we were looking for a six-foot fence, and, and we got the variance, uh, but, you know, delay was damaging financially and, and otherwise in risk to our employees. So I, I'm just here to say if there is an effort to breathe some common sense into some of the, the zoning regulations, I would applaud that effort. One size, shoe doesn't fit all, and, uh, you know, we could have gotten our, our work accomplished a lot quicker, saved a lot of money that could have gone back to our employees, et cetera, and, uh, you know, just, I, I, I wasn't involved in the zoning, I didn't get involved with it, and I thought when we got the fencing up, I would just have my say at a public forum at the, at the West Ocean Township, so, um, just wanted to express that, nothing, not looking for any answers, but on a go-forward basis, uh, you know, I think, uh, I think some, um, you know, looking at the, the circumstances and saying every, every circumstance is a little different, and, you know, that's one of the things, being in a, in a community like West Ocean, you have the opportunity to, to recognize that one size doesn't fit all. So, that's all, I'm done, and there's nobody with me, so.
Well, Pete, thank you for your comments, I, I just want to, because, well, people attending who have maybe not been to a meeting before, when you threw out the, the financial number, the actual zoning variance cost was not the number you were mentioning, I just want to make sure that people.
Why didn't we include, it was about two hundred thousand by the time we purchased.
That's for the lots of people's catalytic conversions.
The cars, yeah. So the dusk of the dawn, the dusk of the dawn guard service was a hundred forty thousand.
Okay.
You know, because we, we're twenty-four, six days a week, and we wanted the property of our employees protected.
It's not us charging you two hundred grand, though, right?
What's that?
It wasn't the town.
It was out of the township. No, no, it was out of our pocket, I brought it.
I'm in fact, I can pay your hat if you let me.
That's a pretty nice hat, you fit a lot of money in that.
Well, you know, as I said, you, I, we duly know the issue, and certainly with, with this kind of review that we're doing of our zoning districts and the complications that these, how it's grown up over the different years and the layers that are involved, if we have a chance to strip some of that back, and if there's a, some more common sense we can apply to fencing and the multipurpose district, we will certainly take that opportunity. So thank you, Pete.
Well, and I, I would just want to end, I, you know, I mean, I've been to a lot of different township meetings, and we've expanded and, you know, grown and built facilities and gotten approvals and, and everything. I'm always appreciative of the community service, that people volunteer their time, they could be pursuing their own personal interests and hobbies and are putting back into the community, so I, I thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you, Coleman.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone else with a public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to the rest of the agenda tonight, and we'll start with the agenda item number four, which is possible authorization to advertise an amendment to the zoning ordinance. It's not Kristen Camp, I'll give a brief introduction, and I'm gonna look to staff to explain a little bit more about it. So, before the board of supervisors this evening is a proposed amendment to the township's zoning ordinance. The proposed ordinance would amend Article four B pertaining to the area and bulk regulations for different lots and dwelling units found in the R three B flexible design conservation district. Specifically, the proposed amendment seeks to clarify and address issues that the township's codes department has encountered when processing applications for such items as unroof decks and patios. Please be advised that this amendment is being recommended by the, by the township staff and is not being proposed by the developer. As this is an amendment to land use, to a land use ordinance, the proposed ordinance would need to be reviewed by the township's planning commission and the Chesapeake County Planning Commission prior to adoption. If authorized tonight for advertisement, the required legal advertisement would not be run until the comments are received by both those entities and any changes are incorporated. So Chris, I'm gonna pass it to you now, just to explain to the board what this ordinance, proposed ordinance change is about.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have much more to add, other than what you outlined in the summary that you just stated. I really defer to our zoning officer Shelby Smith and our engineer Brian Colacassu, you've really been the ones that have been dealing with these issues. But generally, the genesis of this is, this is the develop, this is the zoning district where the government is located. I know recently we've been dealing with issues due to some ambiguities related to things like unroof decks and patios that have caused some, uh, consternation, I'll say, and also involved getting involved with the HOA. So I'm gonna pass it over to Shelby to kind of explain some of the issues that she's had to deal with, and I will note that Brian and Shelby have both been working upon this for a couple of months with our solicitor, with our solicitor, and Tom worked on this ordinance with Kristen, and we also met with Judy Goldstein from Gilmore Associates to talk about this as part of our zoning ordinance update.
Just so I'm clear, is the R three B zoning district only at Greystone, or is there anywhere else in the township that has that?
I think it's only Greystone.
Okay, this is specific to the, the new development.
And if I may, the, this ordinance creates area and bulk regulations for the different dwelling types. So you have some single-family detached houses, which are on fee lots, and actually they own the house and the lot. And then you have others that only own the footprint of the house, and you have twin dwellings, and you have townhouse dwellings, so.
And single-family dwellings that own the footprint of the property.
Correct. So the, the effort here is to create area bulk regulations that can be enforced in the future based on the specific dwelling type and ownership model.
So up to this point, we've only had one universal set of area bulk requirements for the whole of the R three B?
I would say that's.
Reasonable approximations.
Yes. In fact, to some extent, they were lacking, I would say.
Okay. Shelby or Brian?
I think Tom hit the nail on the head, and I want to thank Tom for his work on this, as, as we're all aware, Greystone and the unique development of the, the parcel and tract itself has shown some areas for improvement. And as Mr. Bayshore has mentioned, we're running into some significant issues with decks, patios, and unroof porches. In essence, as it currently sits, houses can be built approximately fifteen feet apart, some of them are detached ones, can be built fifteen feet apart. However, in the code, for a unroof deck, unroof patio, unroof porch, or unroof terrace, has to be twenty-five feet apart. So a lot of homeowners in Greystone are putting in their decks, patios, terraces, and unroof porches, and unfortunately are currently being denied as their house is only fifteen to eighteen feet apart from their neighbor, and they clearly do not have the room in the back to shrink it another ten feet on both sides. So we worked with Kristen's office and specifically Tom in an effort to address that immediate issue while also addressing the issues that we see coming down further in the future, which is the development with the, with the very unique layout of Greystone in and of itself.
Okay, so questions from the board for Shelby or Brian?
How did they not see this coming?
Although I was not here when Greystone originally was developed, I think, as I understand it, the ordinance was written and then plans were designed, and then just through the progression of planning, it was changed and the ordinance was never updated to reflect.
If I may, I have some institutional memory, remember, a developer originally came in here, I think, wanted to build seven hundred and fifty dwelling units, and the township at that time was very interested in preserving the property. So the whole thing to some extent was a negotiation to try to get what the township wanted and also give the owner the ability to develop the property less intensely than what was originally.
And this ordinance would only pertain to properties that the property owner is trying to add along to the property they're buying, this would not impact any of the houses that have been built by M D Os.
And it's also, we also made an effort to develop this ordinance such that nothing would become non-conforming. So we can't guarantee there won't be a single lot that's non-conforming, but that's what we tried to.
For example, there, each lot was assigned a square footage of impermeas by the builder for what they can build on the block for their small water system. If they go over that, so that was it, it was a self-imposed allotment on their building permit, there wasn't a, you can build to a max percentage zone, it was self, it was kind of self-imposed. So we tried to come up with a ordinance that separates the building types, because there's four different housing types in the development, and four different zoning types, so that person that buys a property, it's not the first owner, but like the second owner, can understand what they can and can't do out there, because the current ordinance is very overs to read and very ambiguous sometimes, has a lot of ambiguity to it that may not allow a property to do it if they can do it in their property.
So, how are we treating the original? Are we going to allow this or not allow?
The original development is built under, is under the requirements that they were approved under, just the current ordinance. This ordinance will only apply to any increment that's applied for it after this ordinance is stopped, it will not impact, they've built out of it.
Existing, okay.
But I would just also, but if somebody in a developed lot comes in and wants to add something, like a swimming pool or a deck, this ordinance would apply to them.
Yes.
And I, and I'll add on to that, that as part of the review process, Brian and Shelby did pull plans for things that were approved, and we did review them while this was being developed.
So is it true that not, there's nothing that's going to become non-conforming that has already been approved, especially now?
We, we've all done our best.
Okay.
We found our gunny at Lockton Camp.
Yeah.
So for sure for all of them, but we've done our best.
So you're saying that with the implementation of this, there's going to be fewer people being denied when they go for these permits?
Wow.
I mean, is that the goal?
That's, that's the goal.
So, yes, that is the goal.
Well, in, in the twins, the towns of the age of strict, they are, they've been granted a limited common element behind their unit, that's as wide as their unit. So if the townhouse or its twins is wide, it's a single-family in the age of strict, it's as wide as their house. But as Shelby said, the ordinance is written, says if you put a patio in, your patio can't be the twenty-five feet of my side wall that I live next to you, but my house is only fifteen feet away from yours. So your patio, you can't even get to the end of your house, it's got to be seven, I give it that fee.
So this is going to address that?
This, we've addressed that in this, we've informed that as long as it's in the L C E, you can do it in the L C E, a limited common element, which has been given to each property depending on the type they are and how big it is.
And they don't have a limit.
Because it's a condominium. So if you look here on the, let me get see if I can zoom a little. Because it's a condominium. So if you look here on the, let me get see if I can zoom a little bit more and explain it. So this is the age restricted units. These little squares you see here, little rectangles that have the footprint of the house. Anything outside has open space and by the HOA, property owners are related to it, except this was prepared in the declaration for the HOA. Behind each unit is a, is a dash line box on their plan that says limited common element. Standard one was 15 by 40, so the units are 40 feet wide and 15 feet deep. Some are less because of constriction to a wall or a pipe. But if you want to put a 40-foot wide patio in, and you're not 25 feet from me, you've got to cut it down by 10 feet. It's only 30 feet. That last 10 feet has to stay grass in your common element. Your declaration of your deed visualizes to it because of the way the ordinance is grown of it. So we've tried to make it where the property owners have the rights to all the common, limited common elements, which just gives them certain rights by the owners declarations to what they can put in that limited common element. But our ordinance doesn't allow them to build to the full width if they choose to. Because it's, but you can put a roof over it, but you can't, if you put a roof over it, you can build it. If you don't put a roof over it, you can't build it the way it's written. That's where it gets.
So it needs cleaning up. So the reverse of the question around does this create nonconforming laws? Is have we denied applications and someone has built a patio that meets what we said the way it's been interpreted to date? Will now be upset because we're changing the rules?
So I can say that there may or may not have been some patios built in Greystone that are inside, entirely inside their limited common element that would meet the ordinance as written and proposed.
But you don't know whether that was their original intention or whether they were forced to make it smaller because of.
Uh, I don't think so, not this time.
It was their intention to make it the size it was?
Correct.
Okay.
So just to review the process now, if we approve the advertisements on this, it has to go before our planning commission and also the Chester County Planning Commission as well, is correct?
Correct. So my, my intent, I fully recog, I fully recognize that this breaks slightly with our normal procedure. But I also recognize what Shelby and Brian have had to deal with, trying to sort of expedite this a little bit to sort of help, to assist them. Yeah, so we go to before the planning commission, our plan would be to put this before the planning commission at their meeting next Tuesday. I've authorized for advertisement, who would send it to the Chester County Planning Commission, who have 30 days in which to issue their, their review comments. I believe that's correct, correct? 30 days in which to issue their comments. So we've authorized, we would do, probably do a public hearing for second meeting in July, I'd be thinking. Because we had to do two advertisements two weeks apart.
Then maybe some change to this?
Yes, and we would not, as we've done in the past, I think there was a similar situation where we ran some parallel tracks. And we wouldn't run the ad until we get, until we get the comments back, so we'll make any changes and we won't have to worry about a re-ad，则是
Other questions from the board about the proposed ordinance? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to approve advertisement of the ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got John as a second, the motion maker, Tina as a second. Is there any board comments about the motion? Are there any public comments about this proposed ordinance? Okay, then we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes 5-0. Chris, so we've approved advertising this. Why don't you've got the input from the planning commission?
Yes.
Chester County Planning Commission. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is item number five, which is a public hearing for renewal with our cable provider Verizon. So before the board tonight is a public hearing on the franchise renewal with Verizon. The notice for this evening's hearing was advertised in the May 23, 2025 edition of the Daily Local News and included in the May edition of the Township's newsletter. By way of background information, at the January 2, 2024 meeting, the board approved a proposal from the Cohen Law Group to negotiate a new franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania, Inc. This agreement allows for entities such as Verizon to locate its facilities in the township's road rights of way in order to provide cable service to the community while in turn paying a fee to the township. The current agreement is set to expire on April 20, 2026. The township joined with other municipalities in Chester County on this process and using the Cohen Law Group to negotiate this agreement. As part of the renewal process, the township needs to have a public hearing and comment session. Phil Fraga, Esquire from the Cohen Law Group, has advised that this is part of the franchise renewal process and the intent of the hearing, in the context of cable franchise renewal, is to discuss past practices of the cable operator and the future cable-related needs of the township. Any questions that are raised during this hearing would be provided to the Cohen Law Group for sufficiently detailed response with Verizon. On a separate but related note, the Cohen Law Group has completed the required franchise fee audit and did not note any underpayments to the township. So that's the background to it. So Chris, I just want to ask a couple of questions. I think you have the numbers for this. So in 2024, what was the Verizon franchise fee that the township received?
So the total received from Verizon in 2024 was $212,294.42.
And we also have Comcast as a cable provider and the township utilizing the roads rights of way, and they paid us how much?
$197,990.33. So the total revenue in 2024 realized through the franchise fees was $410,284.75.
Okay, and Verizon's had multiple, I believe, multiple extensions, automatic extensions of their agreement, but in 2026 it comes to an end. Is that correct or not?
I don't believe that's accurate. I think their last agreement did expire sometime in 2021, and there wasn't a receipt.
A single five-year renewal?
It was a single five-year renewal. As far, to the best of my knowledge, there are no extensions in the current franchise agreement.
Okay. And so at this point, the Cohen Law Group were charged with doing two things. One was to audit the receipt of the fees that Verizon's paid to us for any underpayments. They said there are any.
Correct.
And now they're engaged in negotiating on behalf of many municipalities. I don't know if you know how many?
I believe 27.
27 for a renewal, a new agreement with Verizon that will be from April 26?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so any more questions on where we are? If not, I will make some opening remarks for this, this hearing.
Mr. Chairman, just so the board's aware, so our contract with Comcast was actually a 15-year agreement. That runs through, that was signed in 2015, that runs through 2030, and that has three automatic five-year renewals.
Okay. But they're, but automatic meaning unless either party objects.
Within, and it has to be done, I believe it's one year prior to the cancellation of the agreement.
Okay, so there's likely ways to go on that one.
Correct.
So I just want to be clear, this would be for a new five-year agreement?
Yes.
Five years?
Yes. Verizon's only looking for a five, for a five-year agreement. I don't know why Verizon doesn't seem to like his long-term agreements as Comcast does.
There's a lot of uncertainty in the cable industry because people cutting the cord. So Verizon has taken a position that they are not going to enter into anything longer than five years.
And I, to Mr. Estes' point, I didn't map it out, but just in looking at the revenue trends in our financial software, we have seen declines in this revenue source as people don't utilize cable anymore.
So the audit that the Cohen Law Group did was, is relative to the number of users in West Ocean Township? Because I believe the agreement, the fees that were received were based on the, the usage of the services by township residents or businesses?
That is correct.
Okay.
But the fee sum is going to be determined by negotiation process by the Cohen group with Verizon?
Yes.
Well, the Federal Cable Act has a limit on how much, which is 5%. And that's what you get, 5% of gross revenues, which is defined term in the agreement.
I mean, that's one place of the agreement. I know there's other elements to it in terms, in terms of specific requirements and things, so.
And that's what's been defining. I mean, that we've been getting the 5%, but because people are cutting for it, just less and less each year.
Well, also, this is the time when we can request certain benefits from this franchise renewal, which would include number three, free services.
So let me, let me open the hearing then, John, just go through this, because we have to have a public process for it, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah. So I'm going to formally open this hearing, which means I go through these remarks that have been prepared for me. Quite the Cohen Law Group, I believe, so this is part of the, making sure the process is open and transparent. So this is a hearing for the Verizon Cable Franchise Renewal, held on this day, which is June 3, 2025. The public hearing is held pursuant to Section 66 of the Federal Cable Act, which sets forth the process for franchise renewal. Township's current franchise with Verizon is within the industry norm renewal window, and the township is beginning the process of renewing this franchise. This public hearing is part of the preliminary portion of franchise renewal in which the township reviews the cable operator's past performance and identifies the township's future cable-related community needs. As such, as part of this public hearing, we invite comments from any citizens who wish to speak regarding either or both of the aforementioned subjects. Franchise renewal is the best opportunity for municipalities to assert their rights with respect to the cable operator and to obtain important benefits in return for granting the cable operator the right to use their public rights of way. These benefits include, one, a state-of-the-art cable system now and in the future. Two, strong customer service standards. Three, free services to community facilities. Four, better reporting requirements from the cable operators. Five, maximize franchise fees. Six, public educational and governmental channels if desired. Public educational and governmental capital support funding if desired. Legal protections of the rights of way, and number nine, better mechanisms can enforce the franchise agreement. These are just some of the potential benefits available through franchise renewal, and citizens may address these items or any other cable-related items that are important to them. So now we're opening up to comments. So is there anyone here who has a comment about how Verizon conducts their business in this township?
Well, I'd like to bring a comment.
Let's just see if there's anyone in the audience first. Let's start, we'll go to the board next. Is there anyone?
Barbara.
Barbara?
Are we getting that free benefit of government?
So that's a good question. I don't believe we have any institution that's using a free cable service in West Ocean.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I'm not sure of that.
Is, is the county used?
Who would be, like, what institutions would be, what would they call it, like a library?
I believe it would be, like, the township, the county, schools, but I don't, I don't know if they are.
Okay, good question.
Will we look into that?
Maybe.
Maybe. We don't even know. We could be getting it.
Well, they have to provide a governmental access channel on one or the other. And there are some municipalities that have programmed using the government access channel. But those are the municipalities that use.
The TV channel?
Turd Effer has an entire TV channel, an entire studio.
And they have to put you shadowed.
Um, we do have, we have the option of both of our franchise agreements for an education and government channel. They, what they do is they provide the space for that channel, but then the municipality has to pay for all the infrastructure and everything like that that's involved in it.
True. Barbara, that's a really good question. Like, I'm, I'm thinking of the ways that we might be able to utilize a channel to disseminate information and educational program.
It certainly needs to be looked into, like.
I mean, it is.
Free is free.
Well, it's, that's not free.
It's not, it's not entirely free.
Content is not free.
Content's not free, and setting up, I have looked, I looked into this probably about 10 years ago in another municipality, and at that time, the startup costs were north of $20,000.
And then you have to look at how, how does it maintain? Who's providing the content? Is it just something that starts with good intentions and then a year down the road, it wasn't even using it?
I was thinking, we're doing YouTube or something here. Couldn't we be?
We're using YouTube as a free service. But, but again, the, the channel itself is free, and they make the space for that channel free. But then the board would have to allocate money to do the infrastructure and the startup costs, potentially staff.
I know, but there could be a return investment to that. I think if we gave it enough attention and really looked into it, there, you might be some possibility to do some of the needs.
My recommendation, because at the time, 10 years ago, when we were looking into this, it was going to be a partnership with the school district. So if that is a path that the board wants to go down, it should be a partnership with the school district.
So we noted the question, it's something we need to follow up on. Is there an interest from either any other educational, public, governmental entity around the use of a channel from Verizon?
And also find out if there's anything in existence now.
Yeah, what if it isn't for now? What if it's using for now, if anything?
No, they're not, they're not using it for any.
Nobody is.
We don't have, as far, to the best of my knowledge, we do not have a government channel. We have access to one, we could set one up, but we don't have one that we actively utilize.
We've got other, if the government, the township, the government.
The county?
County.
As far as I know, they don't have one.
But that's over.
As far as I know, they don't have one.
So we've got the question now, it's, we could go to, good question, we can follow up on this. Is there any other public questions or comments on those nine issues I went through? Does anyone use Verizon and have they got customer service experience in dealing with Verizon? Steve?
Use both Verizon and Comcast and Verizon receives here, plus one response.
Via phone, via email?
Usually it's phone. And I will say too that I use both prior to like business life and Verizon.
You, you turned to service, right? Service for life, okay. Is there other public comment on customer service? The state-of-the-art cable system, is that what you would consider it?
One comment.
Yes?
I have Verizon and they've been, we, we got rid of Comcast and we're into Verizon. And they've been very quick to respond to, to us, despite.
For your service needs, yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot your name, so.
Karen.
Karen, thank you, Karen. Any other public comments? Okay, what comments do the board have on those nine potential areas of consideration for providing information to the law group?
The other question, Ann, can you tell us what the PEG capital support funding, what that is, what that is about?
I have no idea. I don't know what the PEG capital support funding is. That might be, EG is generally what they refer to for the channel, education and government.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if there's a source of funding to start a channel.
And if they would lend you money to?
Maybe. I don't know. I've never looked into it.
There would definitely be some funding for some of these, possible uses with some of these government agents. So again, that's another question, what's available, what way funding?
And what is a maximized franchise?
That's to Tom's point, I believe, where we'll, you know, make sure we get the maximum 5% that we're entitled to based on whatever it is, users at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, there's some kind of calculation presumably on a monthly basis that we're allowed to use. So we're relying on the Cohen Law Group to make sure that we get that as part of the new agreement.
And the, I believe, I also believe that's to make sure that we are getting paid for everything that we are entitled to under the Federal Cable Act. And this is the, just, we discussed this back in 2024, but this is what the Cohen Law Group specializes in, these types of renewals. They did this renewal for, the, West Ocean actually spearheaded the renewal. It started in 2019. East Bradford took the reins this time, and they did the last one.
Okay. I have a question related to number eight, legal protections of the rights of way. What is specific to that in agreement? Tom, have you any familiarity with that?
I believe what Cohen is referring to, that when they occupy the right of way, they have to get, they have to make sure they're not interfering with other utilities and safeguard the right of way.
So we would have some indemnifications against any work they did? That kind of thing would be included in that?
It may. I don't know. I haven't seen it.
Okay.
But Cohen will make sure you get everything you're entitled to.
Have we had any problems, Chris, Brian, Shelby, with Verizon in doing work that has resulted in problems within the township in the last five years?
Doing work in the last five years? No, but I can say in French Meadows, we did run into an issue with Verizon, the location of Verizon. the location of Verizon's infrastructure.
It was not as matched?
It was prop, it was properly marked, but when it was excavated, we discovered that it had to be moved by hand. Instead, it couldn't be relocated except by hand.
So we, we thought it could be moved other than by hand?
We weren't aware until we excavated it.
Also recall that when we did the school water project of Ravens Lane, there was an issue there, which actually involved construction about a month. There was a Verizon line in the way of the four foot, as I am, or stormwater pipe that had to be placed there, and it took them quite a while to respond before they finally came out. That's before your time, right? So that was an issue as far as responsibility.
I wasn't involved. I, I.
Yeah, that was before your time too, I think.
I, it, it linked to a lot of that as well. Utility relocation from utilities. I've been involved in projects where they had a whole land relocated and it took two or three years to get a response. So, yes, so a month was, a month is very quick in their world.
Problem is, in the estimators' world, it wasn't. And in the neighbors, you know, they had open pits going on for a month. And they finally did respond and took them along.
So is there any specific action around this number eight or not?
I'm wondering. What can we got? I mean, as far as better mechanisms to enforce their responsibilities. I'm now agreeing with Steve here. I think Verizon is much more responsive, generally speaking, than Comcast, but we're dealing with Verizon here, so.
Okay. Is, is the cable in, is it all fiber optic for Verizon?
Yes.
In this township?
As far as I know. It's all related to Verizon. I don't know.
All right, we've. Is there anything else from the board first?
Oh, yeah, that's a question.
Okay, Steve?
Sean, do we only receive money on cable portion versus internet?
It's just cable. It doesn't involve internet.
So there's no reimbursement for it?
No, there's nothing on, oh, believe me, we would, we would love to receive franchise fee revenue for internet subscribers because, you know, as people cut the cable, they keep their, cut the cable, they keep their internet. But to the best of my knowledge, if I'm correct or I'm wrong, the Federal Cable Act only applies to cable television. It does not apply to internet service.
That's correct.
So this is something that's going to be decreasing?
It has been. If you go back and look at the budgets for the last five years, you can see it's continued slow, steady decline.
As I, as I said earlier, I didn't go through in preparation for this. I didn't, I didn't analyze it. But you can see the decline if you look at the past five years.
Yes.
So you, yes, so you're talking about broadcast cable, like just the broadcast, you're not talking about internet?
Correct.
You're not talking about internet access. Do they, they don't pay a franchise fee for that?
No. It's, it's all operated under the Federal Cable Act, and as I just said, internet is not covered under that.
Okay, so what about, what about wireless? What about mobile?
Nothing.
So they can put up to 5G and that kind of thing without having the consultants attached at all?
No, they have to go through the permitting process, but they don't have to pay any kind of special. I believe there is actually some kind of, some kind of small co-location fee, but they don't have to pay any kind of like an annual or a quarterly franchise fee based on the number of users.
And so it's not, it's cable?
It's just broadcast cable.
Yeah, because that's true. That's going, that, that's going to be gone pretty soon.
Every quarter, we get payments from Verizon and Comcast, and it's based on the users. And it's only for cable.
Will they give us free internet? It's like, you know.
We, I can tell, in the last, in the last negotiation, I know we talked about trying to get municipalities free internet service, and they would have wanted to get.
So.
And that's not unusual.
I mean, free cable, the on-demand type service in the township?
That's, that's all they would offer. That's pretty much all they offer. They'll only do what they have to.
Any other questions?
How's it compare to Comcast? Well, Comcast, you know.
Well, we went through the same process with them, and Chris mentioned the two numbers.
Do they give us anything?
Yes. Well, we can get, we can get free cable from Comcast, but not like internet or phone service or anything like that.
You can get free cable TV?
Yep. We pay, we pay for internet.
Do we have that here, the free cable TV, like in the township building?
Uh, yeah, we have, we have television service in the building, Dave.
Would have like the high school or?
I believe those schools would be eligible. I don't know about the top of my head.
But I'd be up to that.
And who represents the schools in this negotiation? Are they not the party in this, Tom, do you know?
Well, they would not franchise the schools. Franchise goes to the municipality.
So would the school negotiate directly with the service provider for whatever benefit they could get?
Yes. I mean, if they, if they have a contract with Verizon, they, they could negotiate.
With individuals or not the district?
Well, the district probably would be district-wide negotiation. Are there any other questions? Are there any final questions for the board? Then I'm going to close the hearing. So we finish with that section.
So what happens at this point now? I just need some questions to get addressed in the panel group.
Yep. I will go, I'm going to send, I'm going to, I'm going to clip the video for tonight and send it to Mr. Bragg at the common lawyer so that you can hear the discussion.
Thank you, Chris. We move on to agenda item number six, which is possible approval for pollution reduction proposals, including stream feasibility studies and soil and groundwater sampling. Looking to Brian to introduce this to the board and the, the audience.
Let me second you with that, though. So back at your meeting in May, I did present the proposal from land studies to, for the feasibility study for two properties in the township for our PRP plan. And at that meeting, questions were raised, so we were back and it's works. The first parcel that we were talking about is Barker Park, which is up here on the screen. This parcel is 8.49 acres, and we had looked at it in the past. And the project was that that point shelved because of wetland impacts. After sitting through a presentation with land studies earlier this year, I did approach them about the possibility of a project at Barker Park along the string to do a wetland reconnection and floodplain restoration project. We also looked at, the other parcel that was looked at and discussed was the parcel that the township acquired, which is 10.8 acres off of Turner Lane behind the new Aldi. Those are the two parcels. At the last township meeting, there was questions brought up about the viability of using the Aldi parcel because of TCE, potential contaminations from a plume that emanated from, I'm a bit too far. That emanated from the properties up here in the past. So I had approached Carol Engineering and Land Studies after that meeting about the product, about the questions that were raised by the board. The first question raised by the board was about the viability of the project, and few people accepted. On May 1st, I had a meeting with Land Studies, DEP Central Office, Carol Engineering and Land Studies, where we discussed projects. You have the minutes in your, in your packet from that meeting. And after that meeting, we did get an email later on from Drew Foley, who is the, at the Bureau of Waterways Engineering and Wetlands, discussing how that project would be hastily reviewed at Central Office and how the projects as presented do meet what they look for in the projects. The short of it is, DEP Central Office does not look at the destruction of wetlands for a, for a wetland and floodplain reconnection project as an impact because you are reconnecting the floodplain and the wetlands that you're creating. So you're creating a better system that's currently there. That's basically how DEP looks at it, and Central Office handles those because of the type of project. If we were just doing a stream restoration project, like we're proposing on Basin Road, Central Office is not getting involved in this. They stay local to the Southeast Region because this is the type of project with the floodplain reconnection and wetland reconnections that would be, that Central Office handles those. That's the first part. So I do have written documentation, DEP, they will accept the two projects as we discussed that meets their minimum requirements as far as they're the type of projects they look for. That was the first question they answered the last time. Second question was for testing, and you have in front of you a proposal dated May 20th from Paramount Chain Corporation to do subsurface testing with 10 locations on the property. They would be, and then there's also two monitoring wells proposed. The understanding from the discussions with the, and going through the information that was presented back from Aldi was the closest the plume came was along the northern property line. And we're looking to, two ways. One, we're looking to stay real along the string, which is in this portion of the property. And the second is the anticipated depth of the project when I said is just four feet. They don't expect it to be deeper in the property than four feet. TCs are usually much, much deeper. So that's why, but we have the testing. I took your questions and I got a proposal for sampling. So in front of you tonight is two proposals, one for Land Studies for the feasibility study for both parcels. And that proposal remains unchanged from April. And that total cost was $17,300 for that proposal. And the testing proposal is $19,900 to test the property that put the monitoring wells there for the TCE testing.
So let's take them one at a time. So you go back to Land Studies one. So you, you, through the process of discussing with DEP, and now I'm 100% confident that Central Office DEP would oversee these particular types of projects. We would not run foul of previous information where it said we couldn't disturb wetlands. You're 100% confident?
Yeah. The third, the third paragraph from DEP states, "As a place to impact to existing wetlands and permitting, if a proposed project meets the criteria of stream slash floodplain restoration, all permitting will be considered reviewed by the Department of Central Office through the Bureau of Waterways Engineering and Wetlands." "As discussed on our meeting on one day, any restoration approach as described would need to meet these restoration criteria. Any impacts to existing wetlands would be considered beneficial as restored wetlands would be closer to the water table as opposed to the existing wetlands, which are often perched above the water table. Therefore, restored wetlands with better connection to the water table will provide significantly higher function and value."
Okay, in the Land Studies proposal, does it, when they look, is their output include an estimation of the benefits that are obtained from the project with respect to compliance with MS4 permit?
Yes.
That wasn't clear, or that was clearly stated in that proposal?
The concept plan would be, would help, the concept plan would be to come up. That's, I did task two of the concept, where it says there they would recommend restoration approach reinstated to help to achieve the township from this forward.
Does that, that achieve means specific pounds of removal of this containment?
Yes. They would provide all the, all their estimations and calculations from the feasibility of what they think we could achieve.
Oh, I know it's not the ultimate number because it depends on the project when it's completed. And then, um, does the recent plan change to the methodology used for these MS4 permit reductions to a volume-based approach from the previous approach? Does that impact the viability or the benefit that we might obtain from these projects?
I wish I could say yes, but no, it will not affect us because there's two types of MS4 permits. Beginning of the permit is a three-digit code. It's either PAG or PAI. PAG is the general permit, which the vast majority of the state is under a general permit, which means it's one permit for all MS4s under one. That's what those criteria were developed for. We're under PAI, which is an individual permit, which are our criterias assigned to us under our permit into West Ocean alone. The update to the volume-based approach is not going to impact the individual permits on this cycle. It may in future years, but our permit was just renewed in August of 2022, the effects of January 1st of 2024. So we're under that permit requirements for at least five years if not longer.
So 320,000?
Yes.
Um, I have a question relative to the EPA methodology 8260D. Obviously, um, with GCMS method, it looks for other volatiles beside TCE. Just because of nature of what the methodology is. As a result of that, if the volatiles are above state allowed threshold, two things. One, who is going to be legally responsible to clean that up? Because we can't ignore the levels if they're above the state threshold. And second of all, are we going to be responsible for other volatiles potentially cleaned up beside TCE if they come out in the 8260D? Because my concern is now you have levels, you have knowledge, it's above the base.
When we first looked at this issue, when we were acquiring that parcel, we discussed with the EDP that very situation, like is the contamination on this property? And who would be the responsible party? And they assured us it's the current identified successor to ICA Americas, which is an Excel Nobel International Chemical Company that's responsible for it. So if we were to do these sampling kinds of contamination on our parcel, they would have to, then we would notify DEP and they would work with the responsible party.
That's correct. If it's known contaminants found as a base by that company prior, but we're doing an 8260D, which you have other components beside TCE that we could find potentially. I'm not saying this.
Oil or some other contaminant from.
Yeah.
The surrounding properties that are encroached on it.
Exactly. It's above the state threshold. I know they agreed to the TCE levels and understand that. Um, but I'm just concerned what else we're going to see there.
That's a good point, because I ended up in a finger-pointing situation.
Did we ever get anything in writing from DEP when we had that conversation about, you know, that the chemical company would be the one responsible to clean it up if we find it? Did we ever get that in writing?
We'd have to go back and look.
I think we did get some.
Yeah, I remember.
It wasn't exactly explicit like that, but in front of the discussion.
I was satisfied. I feel like we should have that information before we do that.
That too, and also who's the responsible for other contaminants found as on TCE? Or whatever they found in their base sampling, what, 10 years ago, eight years ago? And that's my concern. I don't want to be locked into the responsible party, especially if we have knowledge of it now beyond the TCE.
But what's, what's the way forward though, without sampling? Wait, well, you had to do it without sampling.
No, I understand that.
Saying there's no clue that extends to where we're proposing to do the work. Can we just carry on with our merry way and we don't know, or we go and know, and then once you know?
That's a rescue take. That's right. And it could be extremely expensive.
I think it's better that we know.
Agreed.
For everybody's sake.
It's just a rescue. We have to take it, clean it up.
Have you experienced a situation like this before?
I have not experienced it. I don't, I can't speak to the history because it was all done prior to being in the township here. So every time this comes up, I'm learning more about it. But anytime you get involved with environmental sampling, there is risk involved. And it's just matter, how do I add any idea of managing your risk? If you want to be completely adverse to risk, you kill the project and you don't afford it. End of story.
I'm just letting the board know the potential, because I used to do environmental site assessments on acquisitions and I'm dealing with the responsible party that's involved.
I understood, but as far as every time this comes up, I learn something new. So I don't have any history. I'm an environmental engineer. I don't, I just was responding to the questions.
Yeah, we asked.
Yeah.
So what, what about this as a way forward? I mean, we can do the land studies work, because that doesn't involve doing anything, like paper exercise, right?
Yes, just survey, paper exercise.
We can get that and understand the benefits that could be obtained from doing a project there. And then at some point, if we decide that that is something we wish to pursue, then we would decide whether we want to go and do the sampling. So at this point, maybe the best way forward is to just do the, accept the proposal from Land Studies, gain the level of information you need to understand how beneficial it is with respect to compliance with MS4 permit, and then down the road, decide what specific project we're going to do or not do as the case.
Are you suggesting a phase one environmental site assessment?
No, I'm saying, no, I'm just saying we go with Land Studies proposal and get a benefit of its X pounds of removal of the plumes.
The way I understand it, Sean's recommending that we do the feasibility of Land Studies. We know, we get from them what they think they've achieved on each property, and then you can determine if you want to move forward with.
Just bar or looking both?
Or looking both and then see because of the risk. That, that will give you the chance then to weigh benefit versus risk.
Right, which I, I don't have that. Exactly. I need that.
And the opposite would be doing soil testing before the land study?
No, in conjunction, in conjunction with the land study.
So you wouldn't do the soil test by itself first?
You could, you could do the soil test by itself first, but if you did the testing, as Tina's saying, if you find something, now you're going to work.
Right, but then we wouldn't pursue the land study?
No, but then you may have to still clean it up.
But at least we could have a risk analysis at that point. Right now, we don't have that.
Yeah, if, if you find something, the way.
Don't you think it's a problem if we find something?
The way I'm sure.
That is near a stream? Don't you think that we would want to clean it up?
It's, it's very costly. It's not a market. It's a lot of money, especially with TCE.
Is there a chance that it's harming people?
But we have no belief there is any contamination in this property other than what came to the property from industrial activity north of it, which is TCE.
It's been there for twenty years or whatever. And EPA, actually EPA closed that case even though there were levels above.
No, I understand the history. What I'm saying is it doesn't make sense now that we own the property to do testing regardless because now we are responsible.
So EPA said, if we leave it alone, it's fine. We're not proposing to go in and disturb the property.
Open up the channel walls.
If we're going to do that, we should know what's on the property before we disturb it.
Exactly.
Well, we have to.
But at this point, there's no indication of any problem. It's just that once we start messing around with it, we don't want to create a problem.
There's no indication there's any problem because we've never tested it.
Well, every parcel around the area can have a problem.
And we wouldn't know about it.
No one would know about it. Probably earlier on that industrial parcel next to it, who's ever tested that property?
I know, but just because other property aren't tested doesn't mean there's a issue.
I know there was a well fifteen feet from the property that we currently own that did have TCE that was above the threshold, state threshold.
On the north side.
On the north side, which is pretty close. Remember I looked at the data, that was two years ago now, so it's pretty close.
That's up here.
Yeah.
We're, we're looking, we're staying right along the stream down here. We're not disturbing any of this portion of the property up here. So Brian, let me know the proposal, the testing was on both sides of the street.
Right.
What was the testing only to four feet? When they disturbed it four feet, wouldn't you want it to go down to six feet?
The testing, I thought.
I think it was four.
To max, we got the four feet.
Yeah, four feet.
Yes.
And they were using a GeoPerb, which is better than the actual.
Because the, working in conjunction with Land Studies and everything else they've done, Land Studies feels that the maximum that they could potentially go with the project would be four feet.
But you wouldn't go beyond that.
Well, you don't want to further contaminate either.
And also they don't need to go deeper than four feet to do the.
Exactly. They don't get what they want.
Where are the ten locations? Is it just going to be along the stream that's going to be considered?
Especially on figure one.
Five on each side.
It's not huge, huh?
It's in the proposal.
What was groundwater four directions? That's south, west if I recall. It's not on the map here.
Tom, I have a question for you. By us just owning the property and having these sorts of discussions and not testing, does that open up any liability if some, somewhere down the road, it's discovered that there was TCE leaking into this creek and people are, you know, got sick or anything like that?
That's a difficult question to answer. But I think the approach Sean suggested makes sense to contract with Land Studies, see what the benefits are and then decide to go to the next step. The TCE is responsibility of the industrial user would have been around. That's not the township's responsibility. However, getting them to take responsibility for it is difficult. I don't know anything about the history.
Especially the DEP had closed the case and agreed that it was cleaned up to their satisfaction.
But it's certainly true that if we do investigations in the site, discover something that we have potential, I would say we have to do something.
Right, it's the responsible party.
Actually, that was, I was able to find our meeting, there was one of our meetings with DEP. And in one of those items that we put together and said, you know, we could be open to potential liability with removing activity, but DEP noted that it's very remote.
I said that all along.
DEP representatives noted that there could be township liability of existing contamination if any is exacerbated, but the likelihood is very low. That was.
Fair enough, yeah.
Well, we have to keep in mind that even though they won't be responsible for the TCE, we had a baseline at that time. In the event that the TCE levels are higher than they were two, I don't know, eight years ago, we could still, still potentially be responsible.
How come?
Because they had a baseline at that point and now the baseline has increased.
Well, the baseline would show that you continue to have groundwater movement with higher levels of contamination onto our property from the irrigation source.
If the levels are increased, that's why, that's why you create a base. That's what we did in the environmental side assessment.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but bases can change all the time. You won't get the same results today as you got seven, eight years ago.
No, you won't.
Because these methods are not that accurate with groundwater.
They are, the GCMS is.
Yeah. Okay, so back to my point, I suggest that we only look at approving the work for Land Studies to do the feasibility work at this point and understand what benefits we could get from doing these projects with respect to our MS4 targets.
And then reevaluate it.
And decide.
Just table a proposal.
Yes.
Right.
I agree.
Okay with that?
I make that motion. Do we make a motion?
I'll say it.
Okay, so what is the motion? We need to be clear on what we're approving here. So you're author, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve the proposal from Land Studies for stream feasibility studies at the two sites in West Ocean for enough to exceed lump sum amount of seventeen thousand three hundred dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nick. Any comments, questions from the board on the motion? Any public comments or questions about this topic?
This, this property here, that falls under that CRC, right? CRC watershed?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. I mean, I know I go on their creek cleanups, you know, and they, and that's Goose Creek, right?
Yes, this is cleanup site for West Ocean. Myself and Nate.
Sometimes, yeah. I go to the.
Are you going to the McDonald's one?
No, I go to the West Town.
Okay.
Oh, nine twenty-six. Thorberg, I guess.
Come to us next year. We have more trash than you'll believe, so. Come to our sites next year. We have plenty of trash for you.
Yeah, I know, there's not that much trash down at that other one. Yeah, okay, so we acquired this property when that Aldi was built?
Yes, so.
That was not acquired?
Yeah, we did. It was donated to us.
Donated, yes.
Okay. And did anybody look to see what, you know, I guess building, you're thinking that the plumes are coming from where?
It's from the north off, is it Lincoln up there? Yeah, parcels to the north have had industrial activity for decades in the past and forty, fifty years ago, when practices weren't what they should be, solvent TCE was allowed to get into the ground and therefore contaminated the groundwater underneath this area. And that groundwater plume extends below this parcel that we, we acquired from Aldi.
And if we do the tests, you know, you approve the test and then we, and then they find something that's, you know, totally out of range, you know, are we legally required to remediate?
Now, this is the question. So it depends what you find. So if you find TCE, we can report it to DEP and say we found this, but we did some routine monitoring and it's, it's most likely from the original perpetrator, responsible party. But if we find something new, to Tina's point, they would say, well, how did that get there? And now, now we own the land and we're going to be on the hook for finding out where's the source of that, what activity caused it, who's the responsible party? And then we'd end up in some probably legal battle we've done ourselves.
My question is, how do we protect the creek now? Is there some way we can make a barrier?
So the closure report for the original pollution believes there was not a risk to the creek surface water because of where the contamination was in the groundwater plume, however deep it was, and how little it extended onto this. It's not a surface flow into the creek. It's feet, feet down in the ground.
And the problem is with that methodology, you can't just test for TCE. There's a lot of other things that come out of it because of the methodology, GCMS method is used. So you can't just boil it down to one component and not look at everything else.
And it could, it could have been in the ground for years and years.
It has been, it has been.
And it's never going to go well. Yeah, okay.
Is there any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion for potential approval. So ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes five zero. Thanks, Brian.
Then we're just going to table the other vote.
Totally, yeah. Just approve the Land Studies on it. Okay, so now on to agenda item number seven, which is possible adoption of resolution number twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. So before the board supervises this evening is proposed resolution number twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. This resolution would authorize the destruction of certain records of the West Ocean Police Department. A list of records outlined for destruction for the Police Department has been enclosed in accordance with the Municipal Records Manual. In accordance with Act four-two-eight of nineteen sixty-eight, a resolution from the Board is required prior to the destruction. Are there any questions from the board relative to the records that have supposed to be destroyed by the West Ocean PD? I have one. Chris, the last item on the list shows a range from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-three. So I'm assuming that this is something that's either just been not put on the list for previous times we've approved resolutions to destroy records and that we only really need to retain two years worth of rec, or one year worth of records for this particular?
I believe that is correct, but let me look up real quick.
It says no, we don't have to retain.
I just want to look up the disposition of the schedule.
Yeah, but my question is, why have we got records sitting all the way back to two thousand eight? Why were the disposal before?
Unfortunately, I can't answer that question.
No, it's from two thousand three.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some of them look like, if there's only a single year, to me it means they're on a twenty-year retention record for that one. Two thousand nineteen must be a five-year retention record, two thousand twelve, or whatever they are, the vehicles that we felt weird of. The twenty twenty-one is a four-year retention record.
Ninety-seven to twenty-three.
Yeah, so there are other ones that are questionable.
So that one related to specifically that last item, the retention, the retention schedule says retain same like this time of time as case files. So it could have been ongoing case files. I have no criminal record is found retained two years.
Okay.
So it could have been a situation where there were ongoing cases related to that.
Okay. And then training records?
Training records.
Okay, so personal info would be the training record for an individual officer?
Yeah, twenty twenty-four.
We don't want to lose officers who receive training for, you know, prior to twenty twenty-one.
It's retain, retain as long as administrative, as of administrative value. So my assumption is that these are based on office, these are records for officers who have retired from the department.
So it's not necessarily everybody, it's just certain records, isn't that right?
Correct. And it's noted, it's noted in here that it doesn't include certificates under personnel info.
Are there digital copies of all these?
Certain ones, there are. Certain ones that are stored in the alert system are digitized, but others are not. Not everything is stored in that system.
The write-to-know request, the dates there are for twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen, and then twenty twenty-two, about twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. Those three years there seem to be, seem to go. Any reason for that?
I can't answer that question. You're going to have to ask Chief Farrell.
It seems to follow him.
And I'll. So write-to-know requests need to be retained for two years.
Maybe he's already disposed of the twenty nineteen to twenty-one, this, some legacy ones from fifteen to eighteen that he found or, I'm guessing, but.
Potentially.
I'm trying to come up with a reason why it's got the range.
Yeah, or, or he might not have gotten, received any write-to-know request during that period, but that is completely possible.
I cut it down, but it's possible. Well, anyway, could he ask you?
Well, we have, we have to know whether we're going to approve this full list or whether you want to make an exclusion from it, if you want to.
I think we can approve the list, we could just follow up with the question.
Okay. So is a board member willing to make a motion to approve the resolution number twenty-three, twenty twenty-five for the destruction of the records as listed in the Police Department? Thank you, Tina. Thank you, John. Chris, we have a follow-up with specific, specific to the write-to-know requests prior to chief actually disposing of the records.
So it was twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one?
Yeah. Are there any other questions from the board on the motion? Is there any public comment or questions? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes five zero. Okay, next is agenda item number eight, which is approval of the meeting minutes from May the first, twenty twenty-five. Is a board member willing to make the motion to approve the May first meeting minutes?
I make a motion.
Thank you, actually. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nick.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I did receive some typo corrections from Mr. Wallman and Mr. Hellman, and those were all incorporated into the final verdict.
They're all typos, right? There's no specific language changes that the board should be aware of.
No, Mr. Chairman, there was nothing substantive.
Okay. Any questions from the board on the motion? Is there any public comment or questions? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes five zero.
Just following up with the minutes of May for, the luncheon for the public works votes is going to be when?
Thursday, Thursday at noon.
At twelve noon?
Thursday at noon.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number nine, which is approval of the bills to be paid. I'll make a motion to approve the bills this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, actually. Is there any further questions about the bills to be paid list?
I have one question. What the telescopic rental was for, for seven hundred sixty-six dollars thirty-six cents?
Can you tell us what page you're on, please, Tina?
Page two of bills list for BOS meeting.
Okay.
Up at the top, telescopic rental, seven six six. Wonder if that was for the.